Thank you, Mr. Calhoun.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to pray for y'all today, if y'all don't mind. Thank you. And it's all about our head. Heavenly Father, we come to you today just asking for mercy and forgiveness one more time, Lord God. Praying that you can hear our prayers, Lord God, and our cries that we are giving out today, Lord God. Praying that you can just heal all of us, Lord God, as we all need some healing in some type of way, Lord God. God, I just want to pray for the mayor, Lord God, that he can just keep doing what he's doing, Lord God, and keep working, Lord God, and keep being a servant unto you, Lord God. I pray for all the councilmen and councilwomen, Lord God, that they can keep leading in the right way, Lord God, and do the duty that you want them to do, Lord God. God, I just pray for this city, Lord God, as we have all been going through a troubling time in this last week alone, Lord God. God, I just want to pray for some of the teenagers right now, Lord God, because I have lost two best friends, Lord God. And God, you still chose to keep me here, Lord God. God, I just want to thank you, Lord God, for the purpose that you have put me here for, Lord God. Not only for just keeping me alive, Lord God, but for keeping me sane in my right mind, Jesus. God, I thank you for the places that you have put me in, Lord God, and the doors that you have opened for all of us, Lord God. For when we was doing bad, you still kept your arms around us, Lord God. So, God, I just want to thank you, Lord God. God, I thank you for just keeping your arms around us, Lord God, when we were battling depression, Lord God, and anxiety, Lord God, and not knowing what our next step was going to be, Lord God. God, I thank you, Lord God, when we thought bills wasn't going to be paid, you still made it work, Lord God. God, we want to thank you, Lord God, for when we thought it was just the end, Lord God, and you said, "No, you're going to keep running this race," Lord God. God, we want to thank you, Lord God, for every time you... Every time we thought of ourselves as being failures, Lord God, you said, "No, we are succeedors," Lord God, that we will keep moving, Lord God. God, I want to thank you, Lord God, for how many times people done put bad names on us, Lord God, and you said, "No, not my child," Lord God. He is a child of the Lord, Lord God. She is a child of God, Lord God. So, God, I just want to thank you, Lord God, for just making a kingdom for us. So, when we leave this earth, Lord God, we will have a home ready and prepared for us, Lord God. And as the days get closer, Lord God, we want to still see towards you, Lord God. God, I just want to thank you, Lord God, for just keeping your arms and loving mercy around us, Lord God. For sending your son, Jesus, down here for us, Lord God, and forgiving us of our sins, Lord God. There's no price that was bigger than that right there, Lord God. So, God, I just want to thank you, Lord God. I pray for the city of Montgomery, Lord God, as we are going through troubling times right now, Lord God. And I know it might seem hard that all is lost, Lord God, but we know we serve a mighty and a powerful God, Lord God. A God that can do miracles upon miracles, Lord God. A God that can lift the skies, Lord God. That can part the red seeds, Lord God. We serve a God that was magnificent to us, Lord God, because we are still standing here today, Lord God. And for those who can't stand, we are still breathing. We can still smell. We can still see, Lord God. We can still taste, Lord God. You still keep us in our right mind and get up every morning, Lord God, and tell us to keep going, Lord God. Whenever we are sad in our bed and sick, Lord God, you say, "Get up," so you can keep doing my work, Lord God. For the councilmen, Lord God, and the councilmembers, Lord God, you tell them to get up so they can keep doing your work for this city, Lord God, and let them know that the fight has not yet been won, Lord God, but it's still... It's still chasin' for us to be won, Lord God. I just want to thank you, Lord God, for just putting these people here to hear us today, Lord God, and to hear our cries, Lord God, and that we also want to just give grace and mercy to you again. In Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Amen. Hey, before we give a prayer, let's give him a round of applause. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
I just got to say this. That's one of my former students that led us in the prayer, man. So, C.C. Calhoun, there, the great job. Yep. All right. Approval of the January 23rd, 2024 Workday Assembly Minutes. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye, with District 5 abstaining.
Oh, we all was out. I need approval of the January 23rd, 2024 Regular Council Meeting Minutes. All in favor, please raise your hand.
In unanimous.
All right. Ms. Mayor, you up? Good evening.
Good to see everyone here today. We're going to start off with some positive news just to follow on that prayer about a young man. And we want to honor a local student. And we want to acknowledge this essay contest that is held each year by the Alabama Peace Officers Association, which allows students to showcase their talents while engaging in positive decisions. This year's theme was "Why I Will Say No to Drugs and Alcohol." Received an overwhelming response with over 500 essays submitted by students from across the state on this theme. And actually, one of our very own, an eighth grader at Ballin Magnet Middle School placed third in this year's competition. And I'm going to try to say this name. Where are you? Are you... Where is she?
Raheem.
Okay. Come on up. So, I want you to say your name. I was about to say Raheem Chaklasi.
Chaklasi.
All right. So, I was a little off. So, Rob, I got Raheem right. Chaklasi. All right. So, I was going to say Chaklasi. So, I'm...
Glad you helped me out on that.
All right. So, you're still helping us out. But we do want to thank the Alabama Peace Officers Association for creating avenues for our youth to showcase their talent while promoting a drug-free society and encouraging our youth to actively participate in shaping their future. We also want to invite Captain Brian Champlin, District 7 Vice President, for the Alabama Peace Officers Association. And Captain, you can just tell us a little bit more about the Peace Officers Association and this contest. We'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I have the honor and distinction of serving as police captain with the Police Department for almost 20 years, but I also serve as vice president for the oldest and one of the largest law enforcement specific organizations in Alabama, formed in 1933. We've been around for a lot of years and represent about 5,000 law enforcement members statewide. Every year, we give back to students as a show of partnership with education and a commitment to staying drug-free and alcohol abuse-free. And of all the many essays, it is such an honor that Raheem Chaklasi has placed in the top three. And because of that, the Alabama Peace Officers Association would like to present a check and a nice certificate and resolution explaining that the members of the Alabama Peace Officers Association do hereby congratulate Raheem Chaklasi and applaud her participation and success for the 31st Annual Eighth Grade Student Essay Contest. And therefore, the Alabama Peace Officers Association hereby awards $125. And also present is Principal Copeland. This is her first year. We want to congratulate her under her leadership. This is possible. And these are the kind of things that we're seeing out of public schools. And so, I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to come up here. It's an honor, and we'll give you this nice check.
Next, we have another community member to spotlight, and we're pleased to welcome back to our community, Ms. Breonka Crenshaw, who recently received an Emmy for her work with ESPN. We're glad to have you back and want to present you with a congratulatory token for this Emmy. You know, I always felt like I deserved an Emmy for some of my acting, so I'm glad that I can stand at least next to one who's actually earned it. So, I'm just going to read a little bit of the proclamation. I won't read all of it. But whereas the city of Montgomery congratulates Ms. Breonka Crenshaw for her recent Emmy for her work with ESPN in sports editing and graphics, and whereas Ms. Breonka Crenshaw is a proud native of our community and a graduate of Montgomery Public Schools, and whereas Ms. Crenshaw attended Jefferson Davis High School, now known as Johnson Abernathy Grants High School, and whereas continuing her academic journey, Ms. Crenshaw earned a basketball scholarship to Faulkner State Community College in Bayonne, Alabama, and later transferred to Auburn University. And whereas while attending Auburn University, Ms. Crenshaw had the incredible opportunity to intern and work for the esteemed War Eagle Productions, a highly talented group dedicated to creating exceptional video content. And whereas upon graduating from college, Ms. Crenshaw showcased her skills and creativity as a graphic editor and content specialist at WSFA. And I'll skip some of the other part, and I'll just say whereas on behalf of the city of Montgomery, we would like to extend our heartfelt congratulations and best wishes to Ms. Breonka Crenshaw, and we're proud to call her one of our own, and we look forward to witnessing her continued achievements. Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Would her parents come up?
I just wanted to take the time out to thank God, because without him, I wouldn't be here. And I am a product of my community, so I just really appreciate being from Montgomery and being able to bring this trophy back home.
Before we take a picture, we want to toss it over to City Council President Cornelius Calhoun.
Yes. Breonka, congratulations again. We have a resolution that's sent to the City Clerk's Office by Representative Kenyatta Hassel commending you on your recipient of the Emmy. And I'll just read the last one. Be it resolved that Breonka Crenshaw is honored and commended for receiving the Emmy Award. This resolution is ordered to her in a deep admiration and appreciation for her commitment, broadcasting journalism among, which send sincere best wishes, wishes for her in her future, signed by John Tredgill Clerk. Congratulations.
That is beautiful. And that's beautiful.
Come on, skinny. He's standing there.
Participation.
All right. Just a few other quick announcements, and then we'll turn it back over for the meeting. On Friday, the 187th, fighter wing of the Alabama Air National Guards hosting an arrival ceremony at Danley Field for the new F-35 Lightning fighter planes, which will be known as the New Red Tails. Montgomery stands ready to embrace a new era of innovation and prosperity and national security, and we're excited about this opportunity, one that's been in the making for a long time by many leaders around the city and around the state. So, we're grateful for everybody who has played a role over the years in making this happen. We also have some more good news. We want to just highlight the Main Street, Alabama announcement. Last week, downtown Montgomery was officially designated as the state's latest Main Street Alabama community. We want to thank those city councilmembers who were able to make it in this ongoing effort to, we say revitalized, downtown has been revitalized, but we want to continue that. We want to keep that going. And I know I said that at the announcement. We want to continue the progress and the work that has been happening for several last 20 years or so in bringing Alabama, Main Street, Alabama to our downtown. We believe it's a great partnership for the city, not just downtown. I want to emphasize that, because I think that was another thing that got lost. The funds that we get in downtown don't just stay downtown. They help us pay a lot of bills all around the city. And I think when we talk about downtown, some tend to just hear it was just to focus on downtown. And so, we want to let all of our residents know that downtown pays a lot of bills all over. And so, we want to continue to further the progress that's been made, but also bring about other attractions. When you're on the New York Times list of 52 cities in the world to go visit, you're competing with tens of thousands of cities out there. So, we know we have to step our game up, and we have to make sure that we're doing the things to help those entrepreneurs and small businesses and those property owners meet their goals and objectives. And we think this will be one of the ways that will assist us in doing that. So, it's not just to attract new businesses, but also to enhance the visual appeal of downtown, transforming it into a more inviting and aesthetically pleasing destination, not just for people coming in from outside, but also our residents that live and work and play here each and every day. And we also believe this will allow us to promote downtown as a vibrant hub for shopping, dining, and entertainment, whether that's those who've reached out about a fair number of venues that they would like to see in Montgomery. We're working with them and those who already have plans that just haven't been announced yet, that we're looking forward to bringing forward to the public. So, this is just another partnership and another tool in our toolbox that will help us not only be a more attractive destination, but also a more attractive partner with our businesses all around the city. So, we thank all of them. Also, we want to move right to Freedom Village groundbreaking, new affordable housing complex near Edie Nixon Avenue in the District of Councilman Zimansky. We're very excited about this endeavor with the continuation of our reimagining West Montgomery Initiative. It's a blueprint for us, and it's expected to be completed in 2025, again, continuing the work that was done a decade ago with the initiation of Lanier Place. And so, Desmond Wilson talked about former director Ken Groves, his passion for that and how Lanier Place got started, Charlie and Glenn, C.C. I think y'all are probably the only ones left who were around at that time, but he talked about kind of how it got going. And so, we're proud to see that continue. And we believe that there are more projects like this in the pipeline that we'll be able to bring online a lot faster than this with some of the boring technical things in city government that we're doing. But we're excited about it. We want to, again, emphasize, it's not just about bringing workforce and affordable housing to West Montgomery. We want it in all parts of Montgomery. We want to make sure that there are rooftops that are going up in our city for our seniors and those that are on fixed incomes, but also people that are working as well. And so, by partnering with agencies like Community Action of North Alabama and with funds from the housing opportunities for persons, community block development, CDBG programs, we believe that we'll be able to do more of this. And so, I want to thank the Alabama Housing Finance Authority, Regions Bank, Community Action Agency in Northeast Alabama, and the community housing development organization all involved in this collaboration. And we know that this is just one step, but it's a very important step. And so, I will stop my comments there and ask if we will cue just a short video for those that are in attendance who aren't aware of what we're talking about. We not playing eight minutes.
Welcome this morning. My name is Aaron Bulldog with Community Action Partnership of North Alabama, and we are here today to celebrate the groundbreaking for Freedom Village. And we are very honored to have Mayor Reed, David Young with AHFA, and Desmond Wilson with Community Development with the City of Montgomery here to join us in this celebration. This is a 56-unit complex for seniors that will feature amenities such as gazebos, fitness center, computer center, green spaces, and picnic areas for outdoor use and grilling. And we are so thrilled to have the mayor, Mr. Young, and Mr. Wilson with us here today. So, we would like to give them a chance to come up and say a little bit about the project.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is David Young. I'm the multifamily administrator for the Alabama Housing Finance Authority. The mission of the Alabama Housing Finance Authority is to provide homeownership and rental opportunities to Alabamians across the state. Currently, we have almost 800 properties representing almost 40,000 units across the state of Alabama. We are very excited about the addition of Freedom Village in terms of a new project that'll be coming onboard with us. We have allocated over 1.5 million in tax credits, as well as 1.3 million in home dollars, which is being leveraged with funding from the city of Montgomery, also with private financing from the Alabama Multifamily Loan Consortium to pull this project together. We're excited about our partnership with the Community Action Network, or CAPNA, over the years, and we look forward to this development coming onboard and providing decent, safe, and affordable housing for Montgomery residents. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And if you want to continue to see the rest of the video, we have it on the city's YouTube page. I understand time is of the essence. I'm going to go through these other community announcements relatively fast, hopefully not too fast for those that are here in the meeting and those that are watching virtually. Just a couple of announcements. One, Gap Initiative reminder. Our grants department is accepting applications for the Gap Initiative. The Gap Initiative aims to address the funding gap between government resources and the needs of our community, impacting a lot of your neighborhood leaders throughout your districts. Organizations, institutions, and businesses located within the community are invited to participate and to apply. Just visit montgomeryal.gov grants. And the first round of applications closes on March 15th. March 15th. There is also a Neighborhood Services Contest on March 21st. The Neighborhood Services Department is hosting the annual Neighborhood Banquet at Fraser Church, which we'll talk about more in detail. But what I do want to go ahead and tell you about is ahead of this year's banquet is the First Annual Common and Unity Video Contest. For this contest, Neighborhood Services Department is encouraging neighborhood associations to showcase and promote their communities through a two-to-three-minute video. No five-minute videos, no seven-minute videos. Two-to-three minutes to showcase a neighborhood. So, just tell them they don't have an iPhone or Android. One of their kids or grandkids does, and they can use it better than they can, and they can edit better than they can. So, put them to work. Get them to volunteer to showcase some of the things in the neighborhood, so we'll know what makes where you live and where you think your neighborhood, why you think your neighborhood is so special. Deadline for video submission, and we'll have this up on our website as well, Sunday, March 3, 2024, and prizes will be awarded to the first, second, and third place entries. Also, our Parks and Recreation will be hosting the Mardi Gras Sneakers Ball this Friday. This event is for the youth in our community, ages 13 to 18. We look forward to welcoming students for fun and safe time. And don't worry, adults there in Mardi Gras celebration happening downtown by our Downtown Business Association on Dexter Avenue and Commerce from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Finally, our Office of Violence Prevention will be hosting two Stop the Violence walks this week. The first is on Thursday at 10:00 a.m. in the Gills Village community and Saturday in the North Pass community at 11:00 a.m. And with that, we do want to wish Governor Ivey well in the State of the State address, which starts at 6:00 p.m., I think, tonight. We're excited to work with our local legislators, not only to improve the city, but to improve the state of Alabama in each way that we can. I would like to bring up that one of the areas of focus that impacts our general fund is SSUT reform, which is an alternative to sales tax for online sales. SSUT stands for Simplified Sellers Use Tax. It is a uniformed sales tax rate of 8% on most goods purchased online from out-of-state sellers. Alabama put the tax in place in 2016. Our bill, being sponsored or being recommended by the Big Ten Mayor's Association, will increase the SSUT to 9.5%. This bill is also supported by retailers, also supported by business leaders all across this state. And proceeds from the increase will be split 80% through cities and 20% to counties. So, it's very important for those of you who advocate, who lead municipalities, who advocate with other leaders to help us on this issue. It's got a broad array of support across the board, and it's something that will improve the coffers of lost tax dollars due to online sales for cities all across this state. And we desperately need them giving the demands and the services and the cost of those services each and every day. So, with that, Mr. President, I'll conclude and turn it back over to you, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions to the mayor? Ms. Pruitt?
Ballpark. Do you know what it would generate? Just ballpark what that would be.
For us, I think it's $7 million, $7 million more dollars annually.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, sir. 7.2, I believe is the exact number.
Any other questions? All right. Mr. Wesley Cox.
Good evening, Council. I appreciate the invite to come update you on a project that we've been working on for a little while now. The expansion of our camera surveillance infrastructure, I want to point out, we've got a couple of members of the team here that are behind the scenes, providing a lot of the technical support for us. Tim Foster and Hunter Wyatt from Traffic Engineering, and Sergeant Donald Lowe from MPD is a huge part of this project, so I want to recognize them. Want to give a little bit of background to start out with. We've got some new members of the council and some others that may not be real familiar with what this project is in place for. So, all the councils, all your districts, and a lot of your neighborhoods are looking for help from MPD to try to deter crime, try to help fight crime. And one of the best ways to do that is through technology, through cameras that can help them solve these without having to have more boots on the ground. So, in order to be able to do that, you've got to have the infrastructure to support it. So, if we're going to have camera coverage, we're going to increase that across the city. The main thing you've got to have is connectivity to get that footage back and have it in real time, so they can use it and it be effective. The way to do that is you've either got to have an internet service provider provide that connection, you've got to have a wireless provider somehow provide that connection, or we can do that ourselves. And so, that's kind of where Traffic Engineering comes into the picture here. Mike, if you'll move one slide. We've got an existing IPS fiber network, Intelligent Transportation Systems Network, that has been built across parts of the city. This network, the reason for it is to connect our traffic, our traffic signals, our intersections, our traffic cameras. But it can also serve as a wider purpose for public safety as well, and that's kind of what we've been doing. Public Safety has been partnering with us, looking at adding cameras, and this provides a connection for those cameras to get back to the Star Watch Center and get back to our officers without having to use another type of connection. And what it also provides, in addition to no monthly charges, it also gives us control of our bandwidth. It allows us to put the technology out there that we need and get the video back in real time without having any kind of slowdowns or competing for any kind of bandwidth. This is all our network and just used for us. So, one thing you'll notice is that there are a lot of areas that we don't have covered at the time. That's where this project comes in, and that's where we're looking at expanding that coverage and getting this infrastructure in place to be able to put cameras in the places we want to put them. that connection, you've got to have a wireless provider somehow provide that connection, or we can do that ourselves. And so that's kind of where Traffic Engineering comes into the picture here. Mike, if you'll move one slide, we've got an existing IPS fiber network, Intelligent Transportation Systems Network, that has been built across parts of the city. This network, the reason for it is to connect our traffic, our traffic signals, our intersections, our traffic cameras. But it can also serve as a wider purpose for public safety as well. And that's kind of what we've been doing. Public Safety has been partnering with us, looking at adding cameras. And this provides a connection for those cameras to get back to the Starwatch Center and get back to our officers without having to use another type of connection. And what it also provides, in addition to no monthly charges, it also gives us control of our bandwidth. It allows us to put the technology out there that we need and get the video back in real time without having any kind of slowdowns or competing for any kind of bandwidth. This is all our network and just used for us. So one thing you'll notice is that there are a lot of areas that we don't have covered at the time. That's where this project comes in, and that's where we're looking at expanding that coverage and getting this infrastructure in place to be able to put cameras in the places we want to put them and make it effective for MPD. So the first phase of that is kind of attacking something that's easy for us to address at this point. And if we'll go to the next slide, we have existing older types of connections, older types of cable that are attached to overhead power poles. It was done prior to needing any kind of agreement to do that or a previous agreement, and these are cables that are in place now. So we have the ability to go to those now and update them, overlash them with new fiber-optic cable. It's something that can be done in-house, and it's something that is, it gives us connection cheaply, and this is kind of a good stepping stone in moving us forward. So you'll see, I've listed out the locations where these are. And again, it's based on what we have existing, so that's why these areas are selected. But Day Street, West Fairview Avenue, west of Interstate 65 over to Mobile, East Fairview Avenue, Norman Bridge Road, McGee Road, Wears Ferry Road, Dalrayda, and Lower Wetumka Road. All of those total up to about eight miles of new fiber-optic cable, and at a cost of about $400,000. And that's a material cost for the most part, a little bit of contract labor to help with some of the more tedious parts of it, but that gets that phase in place. Right now, we are working on specifications for procuring the materials that we need, and we are putting a plan together to start installation this year on these eight miles of fiber. I'll also note on the map, it may be kind of hard to see, but there's two lines that you see that are dotted blue color. One is about a six-mile stretch from downtown on Madison Avenue out Atlanta Highway to an existing fiber that we have on Atlanta Highway at Taylor Road. That's a separate project, but it's the same thing, it's the same idea, it's just funded a different way. That's a franchise agreement with AT&amp;T for a project they were doing, that we had a conduit put in for this purpose, and we're going to be finishing that project off at the same time. And then there's a small piece on Fairview Avenue, which coincides with the existing or the newly started project on Fairview Avenue. A part of that project will be the same thing we're doing here, is installing new aerial fiber-optic cable. So those pieces, I've kind of added on here so you can see those. So the next phase, or part B to Phase 1 here, is underground fiber-optic installation. So now we're looking at expanding to new areas that don't have aerial existing and where we want to start bridging some of these gaps. So there's three locations here totaling, again, about eight miles of fiber. One running out Maxxel Boulevard, Bell Street, and Birmingham Highway, and then connecting over to Day and Air Base. Then we have a second piece from McGee Road over to Fairview Avenue, including Woodley. That piece right there through the middle connecting up some other pieces that we're putting in with the aerial part of the project. And then finally, a third piece down on Mobile Highway that's making a connection from the South Boulevard down to US 80, where we have some wireless devices kind of bridging a gap there. This would kind of tie that entire area in with our network. So you can see the big difference here, the eight miles, we're looking at close to a $2 million cost on that as we go underground. There's a, we'll have to bring in contractors to do that work. So that's where we are at this phase right now. We're going to kind of run concurrently with the aerial. This is going to require design, and we're looking at hopefully having design completed this year and looking at construction maybe on this next year is the timeline. So that's where we are. Any questions you have, I will try to answer and...
Mr. President, Wesley, so this last piece, this is the red that's highlighted on the map?
That's correct, yes.
Will we get a, can we get a copy of these two?
I can, yes. I can get you a copy. Yeah, and kind of the ideas of these locations as being our first ones to go to as we expand. One, we don't have good coverage in the western gateway to the city, the Birmingham Highway area, Air Base, West Boulevard. This really gets us out to that area so we can see that gateway coming into the city, and it starts to open up possibilities for those neighborhoods. The same thing with McGee Road and Woodley Road. You noticed at the beginning there, we've got a big chunk of neighborhoods right there in that, I'll call it inside the loop on the north of the Southern Boulevard, that we don't really have the coverage. And so that stretch connecting to the other pieces that we're able to get in place gives us a really good corridor through that, the middle of all those neighborhoods. And then, like I said, that third piece down there, that really bridges that gap and gets us out to the US 80 Airport and the neighborhoods in that area, so.
Did you give us an estimated start time on this piece on the Phase 2? Estimated start date?
Start dates, this will require a little more design work, and we're going to have to get a contractor onboard to do a lot of this work. So we're looking at design in 2024 and look at construction in 2025.
Thank you.
Wesley, I know we've talked, we had several meetings on this. Could you please share with everybody how much more it costs to put it underground opposed to wrapping and repairing it on the existing wire? Because that's one of my pet peeves, Mayor. I cannot believe Alabama Power will not let us put this on the poll. We have to bury it, is it four times, three times, five times? Because it's a lot of money.
In this situation, you're looking at eight miles on each one, you're looking at roughly half a million dollars for the eight miles of aerial versus about $2 million for the under...
Five times more, Mayor. And it's ridiculous, we've had these conversations, because I'm a huge fan of this. And whatever the officer's count is, if we know the crime's about to happen or a problem, we can get them there. We have eyes when we don't do. Wesley, I'm a huge pro, but we could get this quicker if we could put it on the poll. We could take, you know, 800, we could take some money and put it on the poll, and they won't let us, and I don't understand it, and I'm just so simple to my guests, but I don't understand it. We're on the polls, they'll let other cable companies on the poll, but we, the city, can't get on the poll, correct, Wesley?
An agreement would need to be made, and it's, there's a cost to reaching an agreement with the power company.
Okay. Well, have we, how far down the road have we gone to ask them about that?
We can ask them and see if we can't put a number to that and see, you know, there's limiting factors to it. There's only so much room on the polls they have, so I believe a lot of it's going to be a case-by-case if it's feasible to do in the first place. So there's some engineering work that has to happen, but yeah, we can definitely take a look at that as a part of this process, just...
If we can take a look at it, I think that would be helpful. I haven't known the power company, what we've asked them for usually, they've been very open and willing to collaborate with us on that. So I think if we can get our information and we can determine, is that the best route to go, or is it better to do the aerial piece? And then let's see. But I want to make sure that it's something that they have been presented with, and we've got all our eyes dotted and t's crossed, if we're going to approach them about assistance, if we think that's a value-added collaboration to have.
Yeah, we'll work on getting a good solid number, what that would cost, where it's feasible. We can look at that. We can show them these routes that we're looking at and see what that cost would be. I will say, there is a benefit now to having it underground. You avoid some weather issues.
No, I have no doubt you do.
So there is some advantage to it being underground, but yeah, we can definitely get that number, see what we can, what it would take to work that out and see how it compares.
Wesley, second question, when can I start hooking cameras on Atlanta Highway?
2026.
Is it going to be this year?
2026.
Once this is installed, it won't be long after, once this is installed and connected...
Next three, four months, you think?
That's that Madison Avenue to Atlanta Highway.
Wesley, thank you, sir. You guys set some meetings up with Wesley, we got a longer agenda.
I got you.
So, thank you, Wesley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wesley.
Mr. Eddie Compton.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilors.
Mr. Compton.
I am pleased today to give the council an update on homelessness and food insecurity. Now, today, I know I sent a lot of information, but I'm going to just give you a quick review of what we're trying to do with the ARPA funding specifically. Now, my task or my projects were domestic violence and homelessness. The domestic violence funds went out in November, and I hand-delivered those to One Place Family Justice Center, Family Sunshine Center, and Child Protect. And they are working together. Now, the only one that we have left is the Consolidated Homeless Service Center, and I applaud you for taking the lead on the resolution for the million dollars from the city, but then we had a hangup with the county, but they passed theirs in January. So now we're moving forward with the contract, which I was told by Terry and Susan would be finished tomorrow, so I'll check with them in the morning to make sure that's done, and then we can get that funding out as well. As far as food insecurities, you saw all of the programs that we had listed, that's what we're working on. If you have any specific questions about those, I also submitted policy briefs for each one of those that detailed not only the actual initiative, but also looked at other cities and what they were doing in those cities as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Turning your questions.
Any questions, Mr. Compton?
We're good.
Thank you, Mr. Compton.
Thank you.
Any special committee's report? All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, Item 1 is moot. Our legal department has filed litigation against them and cannot be reviewed at this time. Item 2, review of Strathmore Park Apartments.
Ms. Mitch.
Representative here for...
My name is Evans Bailey. I'm here on behalf of Fochie Residential Management Company. I'm the recent manager of the Strathmore Apartments. Thank you to the council for inviting us here today. Fochie has become the manager of this property about 75 days ago. In that time, they've replaced all staff at the property. They've hired a new onsite manager. They have one full-time maintenance tech that began when they took over, and they have another, a second, all-time maintenance tech that is there starting yesterday. They have fielded approximately 230 maintenance requests since taking over the property 75 days ago as manager. I'm familiar with an issue that was involved, I think it was an old construction dumpster that had been left on the property, and there were tenants and trespassers and non-tenants alike that were kind of treating that dumpster as their own, and I believe that issue has since been resolved, and the dumpster has been removed. But I'm happy for the opportunity to be here in front of the council, happy to answer any questions or listen to any tenant concerns, and I'll try to do my best to facilitate addressing those as best as I can.
Mr. President. Ms. Mitch, can I see, do I have any tenants in the meeting?
Yes, sir.
This is a public here.
Do we have any tenants for Strathmore Apartments here? So the things that, and I'm glad that you guys came in, you kind of addressed some of the emails and the phone calls that I have. Mr. President and Ms. Blaylock, I would like to see them back in 60 days.
Review for in 60 days, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman Mitchell.
I just have one question, Mr. President, Councilman Mitchell. You said for Fochie, Fochie, they are the property managers now, or did they purchase the property?
Fochie is not the owner. It is the same owner, and Fochie is now the new property manager.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, council.
Item 3, ordinance vacating a portion of Morris Street.
All right, someone? Yes, sir. Your name for the record?
Good evening, I'm Chris Bostick with Pilgrims and Bostick Engineering, and we are representing the Equal Justice Initiative in this. I'm just here to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Bostick? All right, any motion? Yes.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted.
Good luck, sir.
Item 4 has been withdrawn. Item 5, resolution obligating funding to the City of Montgomery Department of Economic Development for a downtown revitalization public-private partnership program.
Okay. Representing from the Economic Development Department on top of this? You've got to talk about it in the word session.
Yes.
Who represented?
Mayor, is that you?
I can speak to it if you want.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
So this is, I think this is the ARPA dollars that we agreed to, I don't want to say moot because we didn't have it, that we wanted to invest in supporting downtown initiatives even prior to us applying for Main Street, Alabama. And so this was, you know, agreed upon between the City Council, County Commission, myself and obviously the public of a way to make sure there was funding in place to support different initiatives to, again, grow downtown and make sure that we have the programming as well as the staffing needed to bring online those things that are needed for grants, that are needed for economic development, things that are needed even just for simple changes in ordinances that we would have here, as well as other programming initiatives such as be decided by the entity itself.
Okay, thank you. Any other question?
Yeah, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, the only thing I was just going to ask, and I really appreciate it when Robert came up and gave us the Trails Report with the $5 million from ARPA funds, so just to put on the radar to get an update on how these get obligated in the future.
Can we get an update, I'm sorry?
Just an update on where, how this gets obligated in the future.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah.
All right, any motion?
Motion to suspend rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item 6, resolution approving and authorizing substantial amendments for the HUD CVBG grants for our fiscal year 2019, 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023, and authorizing the mayor to act as official representative.
All right. You want to speak to us something, please, sir?
Yes, I'm Gary Sharp, the Grants Administrator for the Community Development Division of the City of Montgomery, and we're presenting this resolution for your consideration and for your adoption so that we can amend the community development grants from program years 2019, 2020, 2021, 22, and 23. What we're going to do, we're going to take funds and repurpose them from older projects and put them substantially into the new project.
Okay. Any other question? Need a motion?
Mr. President.
Okay. What I'm understanding here, though, you know, we just had the discussion about Capitol Heights.
Yes.
See, if we move that money, and we need that money, I mean, we've got a roofing problem there.
Yes. With the Capitol Heights re-roofing project, there was a general contractor that completed that, and they did warranty their work, and so I will be in touch with them directly so that they can make good on their warranty.
Do we know how long the warranty was? I mean...
Well, I would tell you, in community development, we partner with other departments in the City of Montgomery, and so we partner with building and maintenance and with Parks and Recreation on this project, but I will look into that, and I will assure you that we'll take care of it.
Okay, maybe we can get together and take a visit out there with David Carden, let's get on that, because they've got some serious issues.
Yes, that would be fine.
All right, Ms. Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Hey.
All right.
You did get suspension of rules.
All right, so we carry this over?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any questions about the carryover? We can hold up the funds?
Uh, Gary. No, I'll put mine in. I beg your pardon. Did you...
Development for downtown revitalization, public-private partnership program.
Okay. Represented from the Economic Development Department on top of this? You've got to talk about it in the word session.
Yes.
Who represented?
Mayor, is that you?
I can speak to it if you want.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
So this is, I think this is the ARPA dollars that we agreed to, I don't want to say moved because we didn't have it, that we wanted to invest in supporting downtown initiatives even prior to us applying for Main Street, Alabama. And so this was, you know, agreed upon between the city council, county commission, myself and obviously the public of a way to make sure there was funding in place to support different initiatives to, again, grow downtown and make sure that we have the programming as well as the staffing needed to bring online those things that are needed for grants, that are needed for economic development, things that are needed even just for simple changes in ordinances that we would have here, as well as other programming initiatives such to be decided by the entity itself.
Okay, thank you. Any other question?
Yeah, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, the only thing I was just going to ask, and I really appreciate it when Robert came up and gave us the Trails Report with the $5 million from ARPA funds, so just to put on the radar to get an update on how these get obligated in the future.
Can we get an update? I'm sorry.
Just an update on where, how this gets obligated in the future.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah.
All right. Any motion?
No, no problem.
Motion to suspend rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Resolution is adopted. Item Six, resolution approving and authorizing substantial amendments for the HUD CVBG grants for fiscal year 2019, 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023, and authorize the mayor to act as official representative.
All right. You want to speak to us something? Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I'm Gary Sharp, the grants administrator for the Community Development Division of the City of Montgomery, and we're presenting this resolution for your consideration and for your adoption so that we can amend the community development grants from program years 2019, 2020, 2021, 22, and 23. What we're going to do, we're going to take funds and repurpose them from older projects and put them substantially into new projects.
Okay. Any other question? Need a motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. President. Okay. What I'm understanding here, though, you know, we just had the discussion about Capitol Heights.
Yes.
See, if we move that money, and we need that money, I mean, we've got, we've got a roofing problem there.
Yes. With the Capitol Heights re-roofing project, there was a general contractor that completed that, and they did warranty their work, and so I will be in touch with them directly so that they can make good on their warranty.
Do we know how long the warranty was? I mean...
Well, well, I would tell you, in community development, we partner with other departments in the City of Montgomery, and so...
Yes, sir.
We partner with building maintenance and with Parks and Recreation on this project, but I will look into that.
Right.
And I will assure you that we'll take care of it.
Okay. Maybe we can get together and take a visit out there with David Carden. Let's get on that, because they've got some serious issues.
Yes, that will be fine.
All right. Ms. Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Eight.
All right.
You did get suspension of rules.
All right, so we carrying this over?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have any questions about the carryover? We can hold up the funds?
Uh, Gary. No, I'll put my number. I beg your pardon. Just, yes. Are you voting to suspend the rules? No. Ms. Beard, are you voting to suspend the rules? Yes. Then the vote is unanimous.
All right. Ms. Johnson?
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, council.
Item Seven, resolution authorizing MPD's expenditure of up to $50,000 for the 2024 Calea Conference.
All right. Captain Carson?
Yeah, we, Mr. Calhoun, we heard him earlier. It's for this for a convention. They've got about 600 people that are coming in for this convention.
Okay.
None of this is out of the general fund money. Move suspend rules.
All right, any motion? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Move suspend rules.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Rob.
Item Eight, resolution reappointing Barry Harmon to the Montgomery Airport Authority.
Mr. President, motion to suspend rules?
For the rest of the agenda.
For the rest of the agenda.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Need a motion?
Oh, motion to adopt, sorry.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item Nine, resolution reappointing Garrett Smith to the Planning Commission.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item Ten, resolution reappointing Mark Hall to the Montgomery Historic Preservation Commission.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item Eleven is withdrawn. Item Twelve, resolution appointing James Spivey to the Montgomery Clean City Commission.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item Thirteen, resolution reappointing Frank Cook to the Planning Commission.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Resolution is adopted. Item Fourteen, resolution assessing the cost of demolition of unsafe structures on various lots.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Fifteen, resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of evadement of public nuisances on various cars.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
All right. Anything else from the council?
Yeah.
Mr. Grant?
I've got some, we point, we're giving donations at this point or not.
Yes, we hit that point.
Okay. Ms. Blaylock, $5,000 to MCOA, $2,500 to the Military Officers Association, MOAA.
Military what?
Military Officers Association, AAA. MOAA.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Mr. President. Ms. Blaylock?
Yes, sir.
Montgomery Capital Rotary Charities, $500.
$500?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. President, Ms. Blaylock, $2,000 to the Downtown Business Association.
Anyone else? All right, any motion?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise... You got it. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Mr. Calhoun?
Ms. Pruitt?
Have a quick question. I see Mr. Dow sitting in the audience. John, how much are your tables for your neighborhood?
$25 a page.
Got to speak up, Air Force.
We really don't have tables, sir. The tickets are $25 apiece.
How many is at a table?
How many is at a table?
Sir?
How many is at a table?
Eight.
Okay.
And I really want to encourage, while I'm up here, if I may, I really want to encourage the neighbor associations to participate in our community video. It's an opportunity for your community to share the positives of what's going on in your neighborhood, a two- to three-minute video, submit it back to us by March the 3rd. We'll have the judging, and we'll award the prize, first, second, third place prize at the mayor's annual banquet on March the 21st. If you have any questions, we'd love to talk to you in more detail about this. Thank you.
So all they got to do is a two- or three-minute video, and they win $3,000?
No, 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 no.
Because the council's going to do one.
It's the, it's the best video out of all that we receive. We'll rank those first, second, and third place, and the first, second, and the videos will be shown during the mayor's banquet, and the participants will vote as to who they think is the best video during that banquet.
Okay.
Okay, so you submit your video. If it gets narrowed down to being in the top three, it'll be shown at the mayor's banquet. The participants will, through a QR code, vote on which one they think is the best for the neighborhood, and we'll award first, second, and third place at that time.
All right. Thanks, John.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. President.
Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Wesley, really quickly, I just wanted to do a reminder and follow-up and kind of just update the mayor since we were here about Northern Boulevard. Have we gotten anywhere with that? And those lights on there, Mayor, we had an opportunity to work with Representatives Hassel and Aldott, and even Alabama Power jumped on board to assist, and we just kind of had some extra steps to take. Have we done that yet, Wesley?
So Alabama Power is going to be working on a design and an option for them to provide the lighting with us leasing that lighting like we do in, you know, the majority of the city. The other option would be, and kind of an extension of the lighting system that is, that you see on the South Boulevard up to the East Boulevard, an extension of that, which is Aldott Highway Lighting that they own, that we have an agreement to maintain and operate. So that's, that's going to kind of be an Aldott, that would be an Aldott-led project that we need to coordinate with them on. We don't have any coordination or plan in place with them yet. We'll see if we can't get something going there, how we might be able to put a project together to do it that way. But yes, at this time, the power company is working on a design and a plan and a cost for going that route with them providing the fixtures and the poles and the city leasing those.
It'll go from the Congress Dickerson Northern Boulevard piece, so that all the way down to right now, we're looking to Coliseum Boulevard and that pedestrian crosswalk.
Wesley, you did say this is Aldott-led program, right?
This is, this is Aldott right-of-way. It's their highway, yes. So we do maintain, we're required to maintain those fixtures that are, that are existing on the East Boulevard and South Boulevard, but, and we pay the power bill on those, but that is an Aldott-owned lighting system, and it's their right-of-way. So, yeah, they would, we can sponsor a project, we can, you know, we can, can work with them and try to come up with a project and fund it for that project, but yes, this, that's an Aldott right-of-way and an Aldott lighting system.
Yeah, my point I'm trying to make, Aldott should be leading that financially. You know, I know we maintain it and we pay it, but this is something that's safety. Aldott is state highway, it's state-owned highway. We're participating in this, so in negotiation, we need to see if they're going to bring some skin in the game with some greenbacks.
That's right.
And the request with that, Mr. President, and Wesley, after speaking with Representative Hassel and him talking to Aldott, the request from Aldott was from the City of Montgomery, i.e. Wesley, from Traffic Engineer, to send a go-ahead to start the process and the project. So that's, from my understanding, that is where we ended that, about a week and a half ago, about two weeks.
Right. And I'll mention, too, even if we do look at Alabama Power building this project, that's still going to require Aldott's input. It's, like I said, it's still their right-of-way, and so they're going to have to kind of take the lead on that, but, yeah. And it'll be, it's going to take a little while to design a project of that scale by the power company, so I'll see if we can give some updates on it, but it will take a little while for them to come up with a plan.
Okay. So we'll follow up in about 30 days on where we are, and then kind of pace it from there.
Ms. Mitch.
You answered the same question I was going to ask, Mr. President. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the council?
Mr. Mitchell, do you have anything?
Yeah, oh, man. Mr. President?
Mr. Mitch?
I wanted to talk about the Office of Violence Prevention, to commend them on the work that they do. Keith and Roe, I'm on the phone with probably any incident that happened in the City of Montgomery. Ms. Roschel Tyas get those phone calls. She called me, and we either on the phone with somebody with the police department or Crime Stoppers. So I want everybody to know how valuable, because some of those phone calls won't go to the police department. Some of those people won't talk to the police department, and sometime when the police department is doing an investigation, guess what? They can't talk to the family, or they can't receive those phone calls. So I want y'all to know that, you know, sometime when we are asleep and things are going on, they are getting those phone calls that none of us up here are able to get. They are going to places that none of us are able to go into. They are talking to people that none of us are able to talk to or communicate with. So when we talk about what that office is doing, I want y'all to start letting Roe and Keith call y'all late at night to tell y'all what's going on in the city of Montgomery, because they are doing the work that we do not see, but we always want to get up here and say, what are they doing? They are stopping people from retaliating. They are stopping people from going out there, doing stuff that we don't know that they're stopping them from doing. So I want to make sure that we recognize them and the work that they are doing, because they are doing a tremendous job, just like our police department. So that's all I want to say. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Mitch.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Ms. Beard?
Yeah, I want to echo that. Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. We have two events this week, one in my district on Saturday morning at 11 o'clock, and you don't have to be in our district to walk for the, with the Office of Violence Prevention on Saturday morning. We're walking northbound, and if you've never participated, it would be a great time to come out and participate on Saturday or even on Thursday.
All right, thank you, Ms. Beard.
We welcome you.
All right. Okay, and our public communication...